All right, it's eight o'clock, August 10th. This is the Sherburne zoning board of appeals. For those of you watching on television, if you're expecting New England Patriots, you should change the channel. Although if you're in doubt, I want to point out that we will be playing our starters the entire evening. All right. Such as they are. Anybody here from Seven Everett Street? Sir?
I'm sorry, I'm new to this. Should I just proceed?
Sure. Seven Everett Street is an informal discussion with a resident who thinks maybe they want a finding or a variance and wants to send us in some materials. So it's not a hearing? Please, come on.
Thank you. My name is Peter Rovick. That matters.
Yep, yep.
We have a property-
Because we're on TV, we try to have you up here just so people can see.
Okay.
But it's very informal, please.
Whatever, yeah, we're looking for a little guidance.
You're sure.
So we have a property that's .44 acres. I'll just put this up because it's a little large, if anybody would like to see it.
Yep.
It's a car out, I think, of an old property on the corner of Everett and North Main.
Everybody's seen this?
Yep. And we're, one, redoing a kitchen, which is a different, no change to footprint. Two, we're looking to take down a porch, since our house is only sitting in as a square in this old file. Just that I'd show you what we're looking at. We have a porch that's here off the house, and it's screened in, so it's nice. Yeah.
Okay, got it.
It's one of the two seasons. Thank you. So we're looking to basically extend it towards the border, which is already very close. We're-
About your property line?
Yes, I forget what you call this, but we're extremely close already. I think it's like 11 feet or something. And we're looking to extend out, I believe-
That's not the way I read it. I read that you're 14.6, and you want to extend to 11.
Thank you. We want to go three and a half feet further, if possible. Yes.
He's an architect. He gets this stuff right every time.
I'm not, yeah. So right now, for whoever's interested, it looks like this. And we're looking to go three and a half feet further out, up to that, and then back here, which I don't think matters. But I think the point towards the property line, that does matter. We're just looking for guidance. I understand it's almost typically not allowed per state or other regulation, and we're just wondering what the possibilities are, and if there's something we could do, if we could talk to the neighbor about, I don't know, if one can purchase a slice of the land or offer to, or what the realities may be.
Okay.
The only other thing I'd add is that you can see on the Xerox that their home is so much further away.
Right.
I don't know if that matters.
Right.
It's not like we're-
Technically, it doesn't. As a practical matter, it does. There are a number of things you can do, and you can put your finger right on one of them, which is you can solve all of this if you can buy a sliver from them. That's, you know, if they're willing and you're willing, you can move the lot line. Completely legitimate, absolutely works for zoning. Often not expensive, if he's willing.
Understood. And may I ask, would we be asking to purchase, let's just say it's three and a half feet line, or would we have to get within, what is it, 30 feet you have to?
Yeah, I'd probably increase it out to the 30, but it looks like, isn't that wetland for him? What's, I drove past.
It's dry forest.
Yeah, okay.
That would mean purchasing homes of four, like 15 feet worth.
You'd want to have thought this through and talked with us and talked with him, because you wouldn't want to go to all the trouble of buying it and then find out, oh wait, I'm a foot too short. That would be disappointing.
Okay.
I mean, basically, you have a pre-existing non-conforming situation. By the zoning bylaws and the way we've addressed other properties in town, we generally do not allow you to increase the non-conformity, which you would be doing by coming out three and a half more feet. You can, you know, you can go farther north, you know, as long as you don't, if you stay within that existing setback, which is 14.6 feet, you could go that way. You could come off the back of the house here. I don't know how your floor plan works. I mean, it may not work that way, but-
Right.
I think it works going back north, as you say. So we're looking to both, yes, go back and go out in a non-conform area. But that's why we're here, is to feel out what the realities may be.
Well, generally, you know, we have not approved increasing the non-conformity.
Because technically, that makes it a variance.
Okay.
If you alter a non-conforming use by not increasing the non-conformity by going backwards, you're altering a non-conforming use. That's what you'll hear Gino and others talk about, a Section 6 finding.
Okay.
Which is a legally different bin than a variance, and a variance is very hard to get, both under state statute and under our practice. There, as the courts say, they're sparingly given.
I understand, okay.
So, but you can operate the whole, if you can move the lot line-
Sometimes people do lots of ops, too. Like you take three and a half feet here, and then come back three and a half way up here.
Yeah. Having driven past, I don't think there's anything in here that's of use to the neighbor.
Nothing of any value in either portion.
The neighbor's house is over by Samantha.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I know, okay, sure. I don't know who that is.
No, no, Samantha's our assistant. I'm sorry.
I am really new here.
No, no, no.
I guess my final question, so you said we, I'd talk, I would talk with the neighbor and with you informally before deciding on a, if we were to offer purchase a slice-
Well, yeah, if the neighbor, if I was your neighbor and I said, oh, what the heck, $10, I'll give you 50 feet here, take it. Because then it's just a matter of hiring a surveyor and drawing a little swap plan and doing it. If your neighbor says, I'll see you in hell before I give you five inches, then you probably ought to find a different way to deal with it.
Right, right.
I don't know your neighbor. They may be wonderful people, or they may not.
Gotcha. You also don't have to buy 15 feet all the way up to here and all the way down.
Yeah.
Have an irregular line.
Right, right.
You can have a cutout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just make sure what you're going to build is fits your cutout.
Gotcha. Okay. I thank you. Is that all, I mean, I don't know, I've never done this, so is that really?
Well, if you can do that, that's the best, because it fixes all the problems.
Okay.
If you can't do that, then trying to not increase the non-conformity, not get too close, not get any closer to the lot line is the second choice.
Yep.
And the third choice is say, oh, what the heck, I'll go for a variance, and I personally would not advise that. I don't think it looks very good.
Okay. But do you understand that you can extend this line?
You give it this?
Okay, so long as it's 14.6.
Yeah, it remains that.
So you're extending the non-conformity.
Okay.
That's fine.
Mr. Fitch has important experience.
Being a total irrelevance, by the way. And I can talk off record on whether I need to apply for anything to do that, or is that just, does something needed to, some sort of permit?
Yes.
You would need a finding from us.
You did that Section 6 finding, because you're still, you're still less than the 30 feet.
Okay.
But you're likely to be allowed less than 30 feet, because you're not making the non-conformity worse.
Yeah, it's probable.
Right.
I thank you folks very much.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Good luck in your project.
Thank you.
Good luck. Looks like a lovely home.
We'll see, we'll try. Thank you.
All right. Before we move to, is everybody good with the minutes? Do I do my one little tweak? All right.
I just found one missing letter.
Okay. I'd accept the motion to approve the minutes for executive session for June 15 and June 22, and the regular minutes for June 15 and June 22. So moved.
On page 222, Anna's missing off with Mike.
We adopt that. We adopt that.
You already got it?
No, no, I'm adopting it into the motion. As marked up here. Do we have a second?
A second?
Debate? None, all in favor?
There's a question in the air.
Question on our minutes?
A question, your process, which also is a process I have to deal with online committee.
Yes.
Whether you're allowed to approve executive session minutes outside of the executive session.
Well, well-
I think we were told that we had to do it within executive session.
I don't think that's right. I think if we were to try to discuss the contents of them, we might have to do that.
I just want to make sure you get that, because we were told that we had to do it inside of our executive session.
Well, when I'm in jail, send me a cake with a file in it. I'm probably going to go for something worse, anyway. Move second, all in favor? I pose none? And that was on TV, too, so it'll be a quick trial. All right. Mr. Gaetley.
Thank you.
Vin Gaetley. Continued hearing on 59 North Main Street.
Okay. I'm Vin Gaetley from Heritage Properties, and I am, my company's the applicant for the 40B project proposed at 59 North Main Street. Guess probably the big update since our last meeting here with the ZBA is that we submitted a pretty extensive package of materials to the town planner, Gino, who was forwarding it to the peer reviewer. I believe that package was delivered probably a week ago, and I'm not sure what the timing is on when we would hear back, any responses from the peer reviewer. Possibly the town planner might have an update on that, because we are kind of anxious to get responses and get themselves-
Are you willing to hear from the town planner, who happens to be here?
Peer reviewer generally needs two weeks to review, so he would definitely have responses or comments on the package at the next meeting.
Okay.
In the package of material that went to the peer reviewer, there has been a change to the site plan, and that was in the materials that I believe the board has a copy of. And basically, the change is that we are now back to where we were originally, with 12 standalone detached units. As I think I've tried to explain from the start, this process has been evolving, and as we have gotten some of the engineering issues worked out, we now felt we were able to go back to the original design, which is 12 standalone units, as you see on this plan right here. The one thing I should mention is that, and I know I've covered this in prior meetings, except for just a few units, most of the units will be based on buyers and what type of unit they desire. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have seven different styles of units, some with bedrooms, both bedrooms on the second floor, and some with one bedroom, the master bedroom on the first floor, and a second bedroom on the second floor. So we're-
Does that explain the sheet that you submitted with the tabulation, but it has possibilities on various units?
Yes. That was the attempt, I submitted a schedule like this, which was my attempt to explain what style units could go in certain site locations. We do have a few fixed units that can only go in one location, mainly the first unit on the left, which would be front facing to North Main Street. I've always called that the feature house. It's going to be slightly closer to Main Street than the first house on the right.
Can I ask, can I ask another question? Are all of the units have the same footprint and same square footage?
No. There is a variation.
So it's possible that the total aggregate could vary, depending on how many of one type you build.
Yes, that's right.
And so you're designing your drainage and your septic systems for the maximum condition?
That's exactly right. And that was my next point, is, except for the units that I call fixed, because they will only be in the location where they're mentioned on this tabulation, one is that feature house, the first one on the left, that's what we call the D unit, and that's just one of a kind and only in that location. We have three affordable units, which are G-type units, and those will be in locations two, four, and the first unit on the right. The only difference in these three affordable units is this unit right here will now be front-facing to the street, as we discussed in prior meetings. It will also have an entrance on the driveway side, similar to the same look you'll get on that first house on the left. And as far as the other, let's see, that takes care of eight of the 12, so the other eight locations can be any other plan that someone would desire. So what we did for engineering purposes, we assumed the worst case, and we took our biggest footprint, which is the E unit, and that's a first-floor master unit, and that is our biggest unit, because of that first-floor master just makes that building just a little bit wider than the other units that have the bedrooms upstairs. So we've located that E unit on the other eight locations here, and I believe, you know, my engineer can speak to the, some of the engineering calculations, but all the drainage was based on the footprint of the biggest unit, thinking that what would happen here is, we won't end up with all of those units, we'll end up with some smaller units. Like, first of all, the affordable units are going to be slightly smaller, and that will just create a little more space between units, and just make the site, let's say, a little more comfortable for the people who live there.
So what factor drove the change in the site plan? That change in the unit count?
Well, the unit count's the same. It's just that before, we had two duplex buildings.
Okay.
And-
They were sort of in the back, right?
Yes, we had one that was completely in the back, and then one right next to it, just to the left of it. And I just think for marketing purposes, it's preferable that every unit be the same, if we could, and that was the challenge we were trying to figure out.
So do I understand, and you know the size of the affordable units, and they won't change, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have three of those. Does that mean the remaining nine are going to be assumed to be the maximum size?
Remember, he said that the feature unit was also fixed, so there are three affordables and the feature unit, that's four that are fixed, so that means leaves eight that vary.
So there are eight that vary, and on those eight that vary, we have assumed the E unit, the footprint of the E unit-
Which is the larger.
Which is the largest unit, and all our calculations were based on, let's call it the worst case, as you mentioned before.
We have a question.
Michael Wester, 54 Forest Street. What's the range in size from the largest E unit to the smallest, just to get a sense of the square footage for the variation for this motion?
Let's see, just running down them, going alphabetical, the A unit is 2535.
But that's the square footage of living space, as opposed to, do you have the actual footprint?
Well, you just really add the garage, I guess, because that's not counted, oh, plus, this is two floors.
You're talking impervious footprint, so just two-dimensional.
Don't be trouble conservating.
Yeah, yeah, I don't-
I'm just trying to find out how much it might change in buffer zone usage. I'm just curious whether the footprint really varies much from the smallest unit to the biggest, to the E, to the smallest unit, whether you're just talking about 100 square foot difference in the house foundation footprint.
So he wants to know, only one floor plus the garage.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't have those calculations in front of you, but I think, just from my understanding of what we're offering, I think we're talking about small differences.
I just wanted to see whether there's more than maybe 100 feet or something like that to find out.
Okay.
Okay.
As far as the other information that we've turned in, most of it is not new. It's the same information that we've been discussing here at prior hearings. I mean, maybe at this time, I could just have my engineer go through some of the latest-
I just have one question relating to the architect. Did you submit a street elevation of the second residence, the one that you now, is now facing Main Street?
The second one, meaning the one on the right?
Yeah.
I believe, actually, I'm not-
It's unique.
It is unique. It is unique.
Wasn't that photo-reversed in the plans? There was something that was there, but it was-
Right.
I worked with the architect on how we developed it, so I'll just, I'm not an architect, but I'll just explain, but the porch was basically in the front on these, so we've taken it to the, basically to the front, and what we're anticipating is, you know, having some sort of gable that comes off the front for that, so that it's distinguished, but it's not going to rise to the level of the signature house.
Right.
Okay, so it's a modification on that footprint.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, he did not develop it.
No, but I assume at some point you'll show us that.
Yes.
He's so proud of the, visible right from the street.
But the idea was to give it a front door. So basically, we'd put this together, we took the comments that we had from the public to this point, and it just seemed that that was one of the more important ones that had been raised by the planning officials that attended the meetings, to have that also be facing forward. But it did not make sense to bring the signature house and do it on both sides.
Oh, no, no. You were right.
So the idea was to take the same program that we have been developing, but ensure that we do have that front door and create that front door in the unit.
Okay. Okay, I've got, before we go further in this, I've got sort of three procedural questions I want to catch up on. I know the last time we were here, there were a lot of questions about, have you filed your notice of intent and when were you going to? Has that been filed?
It's filed.
Okay, and you guys are processing that?
Yeah, I assume we're going to come to schedule at some point.
Okay, that, very soon we'll come to schedule.
That's what I see. Only comments.
And your waiver list, is this May 11 waiver list that was in the package?
It hasn't been modified yet.
Sorry, what?
It has not been modified.
Okay, good, all right.
It's still going to be our, our-
All right, that's still the bit. Then the other thing, I wanted to get a sense of schedule, because otherwise, we're out of time and have to close the hearing at the next one, and we're not inclined to do that, and we would hope that you wouldn't be either. Have you had any discussions with, the peer reviewers are going to be back, and hopefully by next time. How long do Board of Health and CONSCOM need to react to the new plans that have been, were filed? Gino, when did we get them? This week?
The last Friday, Thursday, Friday.
Friday, okay. And is that, so how long do you need to react to those?
Well, staff is on vacation at the moment, so I haven't seen whatever's come in, and the question is, are we doing our normal review, or are we waiting for the peer reviewer to do their review, and any polls or reviewing of the peer reviewers work? How are we supposed to proceed?
Well, Gino, I'd suggest that they at least start, don't you think? Because if they, if they wait until they hear from the peer reviewer, it's going to be a longer timeframe.
Right.
So I would suggest that you at least begin your review, but with an open mind, and let's see what the peer reviewer comes along at the same time.
Okay.
Because we won't have the peer reviewer for another two weeks, sounds like, or plus or minus.
Okay.
Do you know when you-
And there's no application, none of our usual applications, no fees, nothing like that?
I don't think there's a disposal works construction permit for you.
We're going to need one, and we will file one.
Right.
We've not developed that plan yet.
Right, okay.
But we have designated where it's going to be located.
Okay, so in your view, would, this board would handle that through conditions, which is that you would-
I would anticipate that, but I think we could be, you know, seeking a permit for the soil absorption system in the normal. Instead, I just, my concern would be that the waivers that we asked for would be the important component, which pertains to the well and the sewage disposal system.
Right. So Darrell, in terms of the Board of Health, we'd be particularly interested in your views on this, the latest submission included another copy of their May 11 letter of, these are the waivers we want, and at the bottom of page one, they talk about their sewage disposal waivers and their domestic water supply waivers, and then they go for public and environmental hall. So those are, those three paragraphs are the ask in terms of waivers that are within your jurisdiction, and so we'd be very interested to hear your-
That's the last time, so I can't remember where we left off on.
One was flow rate, sewage disposal was flow rate for elderly housing, number of wells, storage, and then the environmental health report. It sounds like-
And we made, we made a presentation to the Board of Health. I actually went and attended a meeting with them to discuss the project informally, and we explained where our wells were going to be sited. In the original plan, it was approved for those lots.
Right.
We had three residential lots approved here, and these were two of the approved well locations. We also had an informal discussion with the Conservation Commission pertaining to the same matter about where the wells were located. So I'm not concerned about getting a permit from the Board of Health, if this meeting feels, so it's better to get one there. I mean, the permit for this project doesn't even come from you folks for that, for that overview.
Right.
But the sewage disposal system itself, I think we just get, we're just looking for the conventional review, conventional permit, conventional review.
Okay, so in terms of what Board of Health needs in terms of an extension now, it sounds like they need enough time to do their own internal review and see what the peer reviewer has to say, and sort of put those two together, and then come back to us and say, here's how we see the lay of the land, we expect to our Board of Health-related issues.
And that, that's fine. Maybe you can answer, do we do our normal paperwork? Do I fill out a normal application? It's fees, we have things to process as usual, or no?
Should we all handle them through the ZBA?
Okay.
So there would be really no application before it's up.
Okay.
Unless it's a separate-
Well, I think one thing they are doing with the Board of Health is, or maybe you've already done it, you've got existing well permits, right?
Yeah, we do.
And they're going to use, so you're going to test those wells?
The board's made it very clear that those are for the houses, but we're testing them because we're recognizing that we have, we have three houses here, if we can't get potable water to support our development.
Right.
So that's why we felt as though it was important, let's just prove out our wells.
Right.
So we are going forward with the well development. We did meet with Conservation, they did agree on our erosion control limits being adequate for that, and we do plan on going forward in drilling those wells.
So when-
That should happen between now and your next meeting.
Okay, I was going to say, well, when do the wells get tested?
Yeah, I'm just being, probably in a month for a meeting, and the only concern I was going to have was if the peer review versus waiting until just before that meeting, if we could get it a week out, or a week and a half out, we could be addressing those issues so that at the next meeting, not only have you got peer review, but you could have those issues addressed as well.
Right.
That would be out there.
Okay, so then I'm, just on the Board of Health, then, since it won't be, right, none of it's following the usual path, so therefore, I'd say, now, in this meeting, on behalf of the Board of Health, we have precedent whereby for multiple wells on a site, they're pumped simultaneously for 48 hours, and the dynamics of the well, contract, you know, changes, lot recharge rates, all that, that would normally be done, but over a 48-hour period, and with all the wells that you install pumping together to mimic what will happen when people are living there. So we would ask for that.
Right.
Because that's going to be a better demonstration of-
And if I recall our prior discussion, the point, we're going to be having the Martinsons' well either monitored or pumping at the same time, but somehow get the correct hydraulic engineering connection data that we can get now on the impact on that.
Right. As they're used to-
I didn't want to say yes, but I had said to you was that I was, we were committed to having our water supply engineer be responsible for what the program would be and to meet whatever that protocol is, that standard protocol is. Not to say that what the Health Department has may very well be the standard protocol, I don't know that.
Okay.
And all I was saying was that that engineer would put together that program, and then we would seek permission from all the abutting, because it's not just the Martinsons', there are some wells- are some wells across the street as well.
Right.
And we would go and get permission from everybody so that all this could be done in tandem. If someone says no, they say no.
Right. But, but the hope is that you could do all this pumping and testing before, let's just pull September 10th out of the air, although that's actually, I think it's Saturday.
Right.
Uh, but it, but it's 30 days from now, so it's easy to think about.
Yeah, and I'm on the same page as you. And I would hope it probably be a little bit after that.
Right, right, so, so you probably can't get the, and, and how long does ConsCom need, do you think, Michael, roughly?
We're meeting, we're opening the hearing for the notice of intent on September 7th.
Correct.
Um, we, we need to have some discussions, hopefully to take place next week, with you and our, and our agent to go over what's missing, or what would probably be helpful to make that hearing go better in terms of some more information. There's a whole list of some issues that we need more information on in order to, for the hearing. Um, there's the, and I can believe that questions will come up, questions will come up then, and so it would be probably continued to the next year. Again, I'd like to think that we can probably finish it up on the second meeting.
Although, yeah, we got a peer review.
For the second meeting, and we could possibly have the peer review if we need, for what we need from the peer review. There's a separate track of the, of just the wetland impact issues, and then there's the stormwater, all the stormwater review, which I guess could start right away. The stormwater calc and all that review of all the DEP standards for stormwater, you submitted a report. I don't know how complete it is, but that's something that could be sent straight to the peer reviewer.
I think they have it, don't they?
It has been.
Yeah, they got it.
And they could, and I don't know when they could be ready, whether they're ready for the first meeting or the second meeting in September. Um, and then after the second meeting, we probably have to, assuming nothing comes up, we could close the hearing and write our conditions, and then there's appeal periods, whatever else, but whether our process for the NOI would go on into probably into October.
To issue.
Lock the issue in there, assuming nothing, there's no problems, but, uh, so that would be, that's the rough.
Okay.
It depends what, I don't know what issues are coming out of the stormwater.
Okay. So, Mr. Gately, the, the issue of extensions is, is up, up to you and us, and you can do as many or as few as you want. You can dribble them out in units of one day, you can dribble them out in units of a month. It's a matter of what, what works for everybody. If I'm hearing everybody here correctly, and our, Genie, our time now runs September 10th, plus or minus a couple of days? We'd have to close the hearing? 13th, something?
I think it was the 13th.
13th, whatever.
13th.
Um, but if we took it out a month to October, I don't know what day of the week October, that, that might be sort of a working, I'd propose that to you, sort of a.
Yeah.
You don't want to give us an unlimited leash.
That's right.
I get it, but we also want people to be able to do their jobs.
Right.
I can remind you that I'm away until the 7th, 18th of September.
The 18th.
Right, so if we, but if we got the extension now, we could have another meeting, you might be able to, you might have to miss that meeting and read in the minutes, but we wouldn't be in one of these, we got to close the hearings. Um, so I, I guess I'd propose to you that if you're comfortable, give something written, it can be by hand, to Genie, tonight, we're extending the.
Doesn't it have to be filed with the town clerk?
Okay.
An extension, and they're open on Monday?
Okay. Well, so, so long as, so long as we have his commitment to it tonight, if he then doesn't follow through on Monday, we can come back in and say, okay, we're going to hold our meeting on September 9th, and there'll be consequences.
Correct.
That would not be in his interest, but he could do it.
Do you, do you want to pick a meeting in September though, for Ben's signed permit?
For Ben's signed permit?
That comes in for his new sign?
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes, okay, right, right. Yes, I think we ought to have a meeting in September after I'm back, before you're back. So that's after the 7th, before the 18th. Are you guys around in early September?
Yes.
So September 7th is a Thursday, I believe? That's going to make the 14th a Thursday?
Yeah.
What about the 14th?
I think the 14th is fine.
Sir?
Yes.
That's a Thursday.
Eight o'clock here, next September 14 for your assigned permit, other things that come in, and the continued hearing on this.
Okay.
That was all a long sidetrack, I'm sorry.
No, that, no, that's all right. I want, just, so I gave this clear, I want to request that extension. What did we say the, the date by statute is that?
Uh, we think that it otherwise expires, that's 13th of September.
Okay.
13th of September?
I thought for some reason it was the 18th, 13th, 18th.
Okay. Well, I'll assume the, the 18th. No, assume the earlier date.
Because you're going to continue to have a time certain, I mean, normally we would just give you this letter this evening.
Right.
With the extension.
Right.
To record, okay, just want to make sure we're on the same.
Right, right, we, we do want that.
It's on Monday, I, we're going to give it to you tonight, so you continue with a date certain.
Well, we need to give something to, to Conservation, or should I say, nice when you do it to the middle of October, so that it, but it depends on what.
I want to add one thing.
Why?
But we did already give the commission an extension.
Wait, stop, stop.
Because this, the, their, their hearing date would have been in August. I did give them a continuation to the September date.
Okay.
Because I wanted them to have enough time for the peer review to come back.
Wait, 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 we're not here tonight negotiating ConsCom extensions. You're in a separate process with them, you can have a separate negotiation with them. It fits into our process, but we have enough, we're having enough trouble getting, but, but, but so then, yes, we would like a, a, a request letter tonight. Genie, it sounds like there's another more formal piece of paper that Tom Clark is expecting?
No, it's just a, a letter that gets filed with the town clerk's office, and they date stamp that in.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be date stamped in until Monday.
Okay.
Can I give that to you to, get date stamped?
And I can't date stamp it, they'll do it on Monday.
Right, right.
Right, you give it to Genie, she'll get a date stamped. You don't have to come back in.
Okay, I will give you this at the end of the meeting.
Um, and, and are we picking October, did we pick October 15 for that? Or is that the date we're taking out of the air?
It's a Sunday.
That's not a good choice. Uh, 16th is probably, is that anything observed? Well, if, 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 if you do it to October 16, that's good, because if something happens that runs us off the rail and puts us back with the September 18th deadline between now and September 18th, we'll have a chance to hold a me, meeting on short notice.
Okay.
We're going to continue tonight to September 14.
Are you going to continue on this hearing to September 14?
Yes.
Okay. Plus a regular meeting for anything else that has to.
Also on the 14th, correct. And if it turns out we get 10 petitions in between now and then, we can certainly revisit that. It's not a request for 10 petitions. Okay, so October 16 is the date. Great.
Are we meeting on October 16th?
Uh, no, I thought what we would do would be to visit on September 14 where we are and whether we need more time and.
Right.
So that we, so that, so we're not asking him for, for extensions in too big bites and, but you understand we may come back to the well and ask for another, depending on how the facts break out.
Right.
Okay.
I do.
All right, well, that was a very long sidetracked interruption, Peter, I apologize, but, but important stuff that we got to take care of.
Exactly. So, so we've got a six sheet plan set, but a layout plan, and that's, that's here, the existing conditions pretty much is what you've seen up to this point, identifying where the wetland resources are, and the soil testing that's going to be after Monday. And the layout, I know you had talked about how we kind of gravitate to this program. We had the duplexes, we had a lot of pavement that was connected to each other, so we need to come back and say, can we try to start separating that? And we started looking at that, looking at the floors, and having buildings that were connected, and porches, it just, it started to just set itself up into things that I just did in person a lot, how the, the lay of the land was starting to be affected by it. So we just started looking at, let's try to separate the buildings again. And then obviously, the client always wants the biggest building, so we figured, let's just go and put the biggest building on here. All the units say that we know that our stormwater management system is going to work, because in all likelihood, everything else is going to be smaller, maybe they're all smaller, but so be it, at least our, our system is going to be installed in accordance with what the max, the features that you've seen before are still there. We create a separate standalone stormwater management plan, the SWEAP Plan 101, which is the seven sheet, is not part of the set, so it's a standalone plan for contract, but we're tied to, for the projects that are scaling scope. Our impacts of the resource buffer zones are the same, and our, our well positions are identical to where they were, our restoration zones are the same as what you've seen before, so, so really no change. The, the one thing with the unit was, again, this unit had its porch on the driveway side, and now it's flipped to the, to the front, with having a front door facing northbound street.
And where you've broken up the former duplex units into standalones, that has no impact on any of the stormwater or wetlands or wells or anything like that, it's purely an aesthetic issue.
Purely separated, and again, we were trying to also get units as far, we were actually trying to get this unit totally out of the buffer zone. Geometry, it just didn't work out, so it ended up being a $500 filing fee, statistically, as if we could get it out, it wasn't doing that terribly. But it just was better planned, so it stayed in. So those, those types of decisions were, were made in this, we were really trying to micro manage where those units would go. The other thing that we identified was to break out the impacts within the zone, so off to the right side of that sheet, there is identification on the buffers, what those impacts are within the zone. For grading and drainage, part of the best way to describe it is actually just a flip sheet, which will be sheet five, and it shows the profile, and then we'll come back to the grading and drainage. So in the plan and profile, it's showing what's happening with our road that we're constructing for our entrance into our site. So you can see that we've got a 3% area coming in, continue to come up at 3%, and in the back end, it's coming back down again at 6%. So we kind of go through our, our road profile, and you can see that we're pretty much staying on grade, a little bit of fill here, a little bit of cut there. So what you see today when you look at the lay of the land, isn't going to be a lot different from the road perspective. Within the profile, you also see the drainage patterns and where the collection points are going to be before that. But we're back to the grading and drainage plan to explain where are all these pickup pumps going to be. So again, with the units here, are coming in off the street, we've got a collection system on this side where a contact board center unit will be located, that's a treatment unit. So all the stormwater that's coming off of this paved surface will be captured here, it gets pretreated, and we're going to infiltrate it during the systems located here. Same thing on this side of the street, got the same type of unit, doing this portion of the road, going into this infiltration unit on this side. At the houses, we've got a collection of all the pipes coming off of the roof gutters, so all the gutters for each house, the first unit would be in the back here, and then it's just basically a linkage connecting all of those, coming around the back, there's some here, those come forward, connect in here, and connect into this. And the same thing happens on the backside, coming this way to another unit that's here, again overflowing to this. The idea is to create a steady state where you're collecting all that stormwater, you're infiltrating it at various positions within the development, but all of it leading out to one double spot, all sized for the 100-year storm bank. As you said, it's 110-page drainage calculations, they're going to go through review, we're using standard models that the peer review company would also use for their work, so I'm not too concerned about, you know, that part of the analysis. If anything, we've got a very well-drained soil condition that's out here, and we have, same thing, we have to put warm in because of that, because we're rendering proportions of it in purpose. We've identified where our soil absorption system's going to go, we know what those components are sized to be. As I said, because we've gone back to being an age-restricted development of 12 units, we are a much smaller system than where this started, and in relationship to what the original project was going to be with three houses, we're really talking about an additional 150 gallons per day being discharged at this site than would have been with the other three. Yes, it's in one location, but we've tried to get it as far away, whereas the other systems would have been a little bit closer to our adjacent abutting receptors. So we've tried to keep this as far away. The wells, again, in the position.
Just a quick, quick interruption before you leave the bedrooms. We will be interested in Board of Health's view on bedroom counts, what's a bedroom, what's not a bedroom? Just, again, ultimately, it's our call, but, but you guys are, are good at that, so we'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, so we could get some floor plans, and I'm not sure if they got distributed to the board when the initial application came in, I'm not sure how you folks distribute that information, but now that we've narrowed down what these units look like, we probably should revisit it one more time so we're all on the same page with what these.
That would be good to resend to Genie the latest set, but I believe when we get in every set, it goes to all the other boards.
Okay, it goes on, it goes immediately on the board's side, and it's getting sent to, Ellen's been on vacation this week, so that's fine.
Okay, all right. Doesn't sound like it's changed too much. Yes, sir?
That's the question I had before, and it has to do with stress testing. So my, my understanding is this is a development for individuals 55 and over, so that if you're, if you're under 55, at the very beginning, they say, I'm sorry, you can't buy this.
Correct.
That's correct. Then also, right now, the maximum number of bedrooms per unit is two, right?
I believe that's the design plan.
That's right.
That's correct.
So if someone came then and said, you know, we love the location, we love everything about, about the building and so on, we'd like you to engineer another bedroom, and you'd, you'd say, I can't do it?
That's right.
Okay. So then my question is.
And probably just one step further, I think the way this is likely to, to go is there'll be a restriction in their deed, which specifically will say that this is a two-bedroom unit now, and will never be anything but a two-bedroom unit.
And, and you're not allowed to make physical changes to it without the blessing of every other unit under all their lenders and the Board of Health?
That, that's really my question, because the thing I like about, about the first two questions, when the answer is, is that everything is taken care of beforehand, they go beforehand. My concern, in terms of the stress testing, would be, what happens if somebody takes over the unit, turns a living space into a bedroom? Is anybody coming after the fact and saying, I just can't see that happening? So I'm just wondering, when you're stress testing, are you stress testing with the idea that there will be some violations later?
There, there is no foolproof governor on human nature. I think the best we can do is set up clear, well-advertised, and easily enforced and, and verified rules that are likely to be enforced, you know? A, a, a really determined cheater is going to cheat. Having a good set of rules for being able to say, okay, you're out of the condo association, or you have to pay $500 bucks a day, or whatever it is. But yeah, even in the, the other project, the Fields of Sherbrooke, they talked about how nobody would ever change any of their units, and I went to one of their other projects in, I think it was Southboro or something, and so on, and I was like, yep, new unit, just installed the basement, now it's a four-bedroom, you know, being advertised.
That would be a responsibility, a responsibility of the condo association as well, wouldn't it be?
It would, it would, and, and they'd have an interest in that, and so would frankly at the lenders. Yes?
Just clarification, isn't it just that one person has to be over 55?
Yes, I think that's, I think that's correct. I think that's correct, if, if you've got two buyers and one is under, they're allowed to age in.
So, so there are going to be condo documents, and obviously there's a, there's a self-governance that's going to happen here. that's going to happen here, there'll be a management company that would be responsible for the homeowners association, because the soil absorption system is going to need oversight. To the extent that there's a water supply concern down the road, or something needs to be managed, again, they would have that facility manager that would be involved in addressing that for the families that are going to live here. So I would say it's very ironclad, and again, because of that self-governance, you don't want your permit for it, so it would be an incentive for the association to then also be almost militant in enforcement of their rules, and if they see something going wrong, they're going to make sure that it gets corrected. And they all conspire to do this together, but they all-
Is it anticipated that these will all be owner occupied?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's what I would anticipate or expect to happen, although I believe the condominium documents are likely to allow people to rent their units out. Not that they would, but you know, there are situations that happen, maybe it's a bad real estate market, they get a job transfer, they can't sell their unit because of the market conditions, so lenders actually want to see them have the ability to rent, because that is preferable to not paying the mortgage and getting foreclosed on.
Let me call on our highly professional and wisely experienced 40B advisor. Are we, are we allowed, John, to require the units to be owner occupied? Do you have the legal right, power and right to do that?
I have to look, but I don't think so.
That's my instinct, is that we can't do it, but I guess we might ask you to come back next time with the answer on that, if you could. My sense is it's trouble, because I think it's close to discriminatory in some type.
What about the thought of how, or the team, could they rent to some people when they're fifty-five and over?
No.
No, it's the occupants-
No, because the rules apply to renters. The same rules apply whether you're renting or you own. I have that same situation right now in another project, and the renter was given the rules of the condominium association, and they're obligated to follow them just like any of the owners.
But, but anyone who's lived in a condominium or near a condominium knows that humans are humans, and compliance isn't always the order of the day. Yes, ma'am?
I'll just mention that there may be nothing that can be done about this, but a concern that the Board of Health has is that deed restrictions only go so far to control occupancy, these are sizable homes. It is common to have deed restrictions, but all the other examples I've seen have been in towns where the units have been hooked up to public water supply and municipal sewer systems. So the risks aren't there, because those systems have the capacity to take another few people here and there, whereas this is a system very closely sized, but again, we may not have any ability to control that, but we also don't have, we don't go in to make inspections of people's homes.
Right, so John, that's a particular point for us, is what tools can we use together with the developer to try to protect against bad Rick Novak, age sixty-two, buying a unit and moving in his twelve grandchildren? He's over fifty-five.
Yeah, I know that there are rules, I'd have to-
You can't say no kids, I know that.
Well, I believe there's, there are rules, and again, I'm not sure, because if you really think of it, fifty-five and over housing is house discrimination. Where else in this country can you discriminate and say that someone has to fit a certain profile, or they can't buy?
Correct.
Well, fifty-five and over is the only exclusion, and I think this goes back twenty years, thirty years, AARP was involved with the original legislation that allowed this. And I'm just not sure when, being the applicant, I am going to be putting together the first master deed, and I'm just not sure without my attorney where I can draw the line, but-
Ask your lawyer, we'll ask our consultant, and we'll find a way through the path, we'll find a way through the thinking.
I know I've seen rules that say that children can't visit for more than a certain period of time, in a year. But I think as was said, you know, how do you police that in a situation where, and things happen, let's say there's their grandparents that occupy there, and somehow they have, their grandchildren are now living with them.
Right, something happens to the parents.
Something happens, you know, a tragedy happens to their kids, the parents of the kids.
Right. But let's get the legal guidance from the people who know what the rules are, and we'll do what we can.
Yep.
Unless somebody's got a better idea, that's my approach. Okay.
Yeah, so the only thing I was going to just say is that what's important is that you know what our intent is?
Right.
And our spirit and intent is to create that type of project, it is, it is being restricted, and we are limiting ourselves intentionally. And all that I was doing with those waivers was to say that the burden in those provisions that the Health's topmen is carrying, put too much of a burden on this project, and that's why we need a waiver, because it doesn't, it characterizes it into a different type of project. So that's all, is that we are, we are putting that self-restriction on, and we need the waiver in order to do that. Again, going back to the plans, so we showed you that profile, and where there's very little cut and fill, there's a detail sheet in here explaining what the stormwater management system is, the components of how to excavate, the treatment systems for the storm water, that's our sheet sixty-six with construction notes, and this is that stormwater management plan, the standalone plan for construction for site. It includes not only the construction provisions, but also the long-term management of that stormwater system. So this is the set of docs, we got that, we did file a notice of intent with the commission, and we're looking forward to having that public get into them, look forward to getting comments back, so we can try to address them in time, and again, get that portable water supply proven, and then we can continue to talk about projects more specifically. Thank you.
All right, sir.
Can I ask one question? I know, Ben, that originally it started out as a not restricted development, and then it went to a fifty-five and over. And I'm just wondering, are there tax advantages? I mean, the reason for that, because to me, it just seems as though it's sort of making problems for yourself to have this restriction of fifty-five and over when it's a choice that you've made. So I'm just wondering, is there any way you could illuminate why the decision was made? I realize it's, it's a burden on, on the school system, so there are advantages to the town, but I'm just wondering what tipped the scale towards the fifty-five and over?
I think it was a couple of reasons. I think at the very first meeting, I, I think the Board made some comments that my application didn't seem real complete, and at the, at the time, that wasn't unintentional, it was because I wasn't sure, marketing-wise, what would make the most sense, just from a market standpoint in that location. And the marketing company that I worked with did a pretty extensive analysis of, of the area, and the demographics, incomes, things like that, and came back that fifty-five and over was by far the, the best market. So it was really the highest and best use of this property was fifty-five and over.
Just to push back, if you're unrestricted, it wouldn't prevent people fifty-five and over from renting those places?
Right, that's right. And fifty-five and over communities, they've been going on and across the country a lot longer than they have been here in Massachusetts. They really just started here in the early nineties, and when they first started, I did one of the first fifty-five and overs in the state, and even though it was fifty-five and over, it was really seventy-five and over, that's who was showing up. And they've come a long way since then, and as a developer, I, I think I get, get your point exactly, as a developer, I didn't really like the fifty-five and over, because it was a restricted market. You know, it's like less than twenty percent of the market that non-age restricted is. But I think over time, fifty-five and overs have become much more accepted, and I think people who choose to live in them are choosing a lifestyle, you know, they've all, not all, but most of them have gone through owning two or three houses maybe in their life, raising a family, and now their kids are adult, they have maybe grandchildren, and they prefer to be in a place where they're, they're with other people that are in common with them, and maybe at the same point in their life as, as they are. And, and they don't, they may pretend that they like to see little Johnny, you know, out there on a Sunday morning at seven o'clock with his big wheel going around the circle, but they really, just in general, I think they, they would rather not see kids, unless it's maybe a Sunday afternoon, and they look outside, and they see their, their neighbors' grandchildren out there, and they, that's much more comfortable for them, because they know in a couple of hours, those kids are going, going home. So fifty-five and overs have really come a long way, and I think people look at it as, as a, as a, a community with people that are sort of at the same point in their life as, as they are. And now, what you're finding is fifty-five and overs are really fifty-five and over. They're, this, this is probably going to be, the largest group of them are going to be fifty-five to sixty-five, and a very small percentage of them are going to be seventy-five and over like they were twenty years ago. And I think it's because people are finding, you know, people are more, are healthier, they're more active at fifty-five and over. In fact, in most cases, fifty-five and overs, it's generally always at least two people living there, and usually they both work still. And that's a big difference from twenty years ago, when nobody to speak of, because they were seventy-five and over, nobody was active in the, in the workforce, so.
You're not going to add, you didn't say, I think you're going to draw from people from Sherbrooke that want to downsize, you know, want to stay in the community, or their children already live in Sherbrooke, and they want to get closer to their grandkids, and then they want to be, they want to find a place that they have no real maintenance responsibility for, and don't have a small home. So I just think you're, you're making an attractive opportunity for people left Sherbrooke, or for people who have families that are already in this area, that want to be closer to those families.
Just seems a shame, because the system in Sherbrooke is one of the best, supposedly one of the best in the state, that would be an attraction. And also, you know, there, you have these two affordable units, which are an exception to the, you know, to the rules, sort of, sort of what allows the 40B.
Three.
It would be interesting if you were allowed to-
Three affordable units.
Sorry?
Three affordable units.
Three affordable units. It'd be interesting if you could, if they could allow younger families to go into the affordable units, so that, I mean, it would just give you more flexibility, you know, just break up the, yeah, it would break it up. I, I think I see your point, though, if that's the case, but if they are fifty-five, then they're not going to be annoyed the way someone seventy-five might be.
Mr. Pelocci.
Question for Mr. Gatlin. What, did the original project eligibility letter from Mass Housing, was that for a maybe restricted project? And in the start of it, had your market study gone to them for review or approval? Because I believe too, that Mass Housing and/or DHB need to approve a 40B for a restricted based on a market study that shows the need.
Yeah, I don't know for sure whether their, their site approval letter was specifically for age restricted or not age restricted. And I just don't understand if, if that's something that I need to go back to them on. I know I had discussions with them, because just as I came in here at the first meeting, and still wasn't sure which way this was going, I had discussions with Mass Housing while we were going through that site approval process, and I know I discussed with them the possibility of this being fifty-five and over or not. I just don't know what the, what their final approval, I don't know that it really addresses one or the other.
Let me suggest that we handle this exactly the same way we were handling the issue of how many bedrooms there are and who can be in them. John, if you could sort of give us your view as an advisor.
It doesn't look like the project eligibility letter discussed, but-
Yeah, I didn't see it in there either, but ask your lawyer, too, and we'll put those two answers together and come up with a way through the, it's a, it's a good point, thank you. It'd be not a good thing to surprise anybody. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so following on the heels of just things that need approvals from others, Mass EDP needs to confirm that they view these as private wells, that's how we're going to approach our review of them, but otherwise, it's a well field supplying more than twenty-five people with water. So they have requirements for how the land is assigned to the wells and owned by the units supplied by each well. So that is a matter of paperwork, that won't stop the Board of Health from going ahead as if they are private wells. I did want to go back to the testing, because if you're going to be doing testing, the Board of Health has a meeting next week, and if you're not doing it, if you're doing it before then, or even if it's after then, but you're not coming to us to discuss the protocol, there are no standards other than what we have in town for private wells. So when you mentioned that you were going to have a consultant look at what the standard protocols are, there are none. Private wells are regulated at the municipal level, state level, and we have set up this protocol that we've used for other projects, and that's the one that I was suggesting. If these wells were to be regulated by Mass EDP, the testing for bedrock drilled wells, which I'm assuming this will be, would be six months for pumping and testing neighborhood areas. They do vary that under certain circumstances, and they might, might be less, but it probably would not be as little as the forty-eight hours that we-
Okay, so that's an excellent point.
But no, there's another thing, we wouldn't do it, I just, all I'm doing is relying on the consultant that you were going to bring on to establish, if we can meet everything, great.
Right, but, but, but hear us on this, which is, you're probably fine when you sit with your consultant, that he's going to say there are no statewide private well rules, in which case, you'll say, "What's next?", and I'd like to suggest that you say that to him or her, gee, the town has some guidelines, plus some guidelines I worked out with Nobis for another different project in a slightly different location, take a look at those and come up with something that you would suggest back to us, because everybody in this room would be disappointed to have your consultant say, "Oh, well, there were no guidelines, so I did whatever I felt like." That would be disappointing, right.
And I don't want to just make that hard for the Board of Health, too.
Right.
So we're recommending approval.
Right.
Something else. The other thing, so I'll ask the agent to start reviewing the materials that have come in. We will issue, if there are any deficiencies in the information provided, we have a letter, and there are lots of things listed, and I get checked off if anything's missing. For example, I can't quite see from here, but we like to know what other wells are in the vicinity of this, and that should be marked, and then you see the marks, and certainly know that things are sufficiently set back.
And any letter you send to them, please send us, too, just so we see it.
And that will just help move things along, but the response time, right, so we need to evaluate that, send it out, and then information will have to come back in, and that just extends the-
Okay, just, just a moment, John?
The, the letter that is, and should actually go to you guys directly, and then you can-
Okay.
All right, tell what, send it to us directly, but also copy them.
Everything really should be going through the ZBA.
Okay.
I mean, you can talk sideways, but-
Right, just direct it, just, just put us on the address, but send to them, too.
Also CC, okay. I thought water readers might be one of the ways to kind of track usage of any unit? That might be of interest to the condo association itself. I'll just throw that out there as an idea. And then I was just wondering if you've looked at low-impact development alternatives for managing stormwater, which is usually more distributed throughout the property, closer to wherever the rain fell, rather than channeling down to the street. And I'm asking that because I don't remember exactly where properties were, but there were, was a property near there that had to re-drill its well, because wells were going dry from the drought. And I just recall it being very close to the street, so if you channel stormwater and send it underground, it gets treated less once it goes underground, rather than starting at the surface, which rain gardens and other low-impact development approaches would do. And it might be this infiltration of stormwater runoff, which is mostly road and roof runoff at that point, closer to somebody's well. So that's just another thing that I know gets discussed a lot now with developments, and they've, the studies that have been done by DEP and others find that the costs are the same or less for lower impact, and easier making, so that they're lifetime. Not my area of expertise, but-
Okay, but something that the peer reviewers will be looking at, and if, and if your Board has views on it, we'll, we'll hear them. Other thoughts, questions from the public tonight? Not that you're stopped, another night. Thoughts, questions from the Board?
Good for now.
Good for now.
No questions, thank you.
No further questions?
I have a small question. What is the minimum dimension between the buildings?
I think right now, it's close to ten feet. Am I right, Peter?
I would say the worst one is probably eight feet.
Right, and again, that's because we've assumed the biggest unit in the eight units that are not designated, so that's likely to just get better.
Has the plan been reviewed by the fire department?
It has been reviewed by the fire department. Their comments, I have not responded to yet, and we were waiting until we got to really the point we're at now, where we pretty much have a, a final site plan before we went back and addressed the comments with now your new fire chief.
And, Geno, won't, won't the peer review as part of site plan review incorporate the comments of the fire department? So hopefully, hopefully that should bubble up a couple of different ways.
Right.
Yeah, the, the fire department comments were there in-
Yeah, the fire department comments, have there been more recent ones than-
No.
No, just the first set, I think, right.
Yeah, I have touched base with the new fire chief, and we are going to be getting together relatively soon. He was away when I wanted to get together, and that will probably happen before our next meeting here with the ZBA next month.
And the cladding material, are you assuming it's like fiber cement or wood?
Yes, yes, it's going to be a cement board, like a hardy plank. And also, just in the design, my architect is, especially where we have a condition where a unit might be as close as 10 feet from another one, what we would do in a situation like that is we would have one unit. Now, you've got two buildings facing each other, 10 feet apart. So one building is going to have conventional windows. The other one on that side will have high windows, so that, you know, if you're the one with the conventional windows, you won't feel that your neighbor is, you know, staring at you from their windows, unless they're eight feet tall and can see out the high windows. So we've worked out a window scheme in the final design that will allow for that.
All right. Hearing no other questions, I guess I'd suggest that we continue this hearing. Thank everybody for their attendance and their time, especially the developer and his engineer for the new materials. September 14th, 8 o'clock, right here. Unless we've got something else, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Still moved.